I'll call this regular California State Department to order at 7:32 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Luke Gah.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you tonight for this opportunity to be together, to, for these people to have an opportunity to make decisions for this island. And we thank you, Lord, for what you've done on this island, the way in which you looked after people, the beautiful island that it is, and even thank you for the snow that gets us in the mood for Christmas. And we pray that even as all of the things that are concerning about the people and this council and bonding, that you would just give them wisdom upon wisdom to deal with the things that they have. And we thank you, Lord, and we pray that you'd bless them, indeed, that you'd give them an opportunity to see your presence on every turn. We commit to you, and we give you all praise. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Just a couple things for opening remarks tonight. One, this made way more sense when we were supposed to have our meeting two weeks ago, but I did want to talk about the fact that we haven't put up the Christmas lights. This was a conscious decision because some of them weren't working, and we felt it was better to put the money towards getting the repairs done. And so hopefully next year we'll have the lights up and they will all be in working order. I know there's some disappointment about that, but hopefully people understand that we're trying to do the most prudent thing as far as finances go, and this is not, it wasn't something that we took lightly, but we did think it was the best decision. The other thing I do want to highlight is there's obviously been a lot of discussion this past week on the Metta back issue. It's something that's been on our agenda since at least September, and I think pretty much every meeting since then we've talked about it. It's an issue that we were aware it could be coming. It's one that we didn't, we hoped we didn't end up in a situation, but we are here. And so we're doing the best that we can to work with the parties involved, the provincial government, and anybody else we think that may be able to lend assistance to hopefully get us back to a situation that we are all comfortable with to access healthcare. So with that, they're not very festive holiday season opening remarks, but I do think they were worth addressing at the beginning of the meeting. So the next item on the agenda is disclosure of interest. Hearing none, the next item is adoption of the minutes. We had a public hearing on November 7th, a regular council meeting on November 7th. And I do know that there is one heir, Dan Boyd, who was just speaking in attendance, but he was not. So I would look to our motion to accept the minutes without that changes noted.
I think a motion to adopt the minutes, but the changes.
Good motion from Deputy Mayor Simmons. We have seconded.
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Cole. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. It's not an addition that I would like to move the solid waste report into closed session. It's mostly to do with financial issues, and I think it's better that we have the initial conversation voted there, and then we can talk a little more in open session once we have that financial part of the conversation. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Would someone like to make that motion?
Make the motion that we heard, solve waste in the closed session.
Good motion for Deputy Mayor Simmons. We have a seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Floyd. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. That's the PRD and D report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Glad to be able to be with you at this time. I think I missed the last meeting, so I did just do a quick file count for the October month as well, and then moving into November. So when I look back at October of this year, we had 75 files. We responded to October last year, we had 33. So for whatever reason, a huge increase, or just a really quiet October last year. I'm not sure what the reason for that was. And then looking at November of this year, we had 68. And November of last year, we actually had 98, so quite the opposite there for November. But even with 30 less files, we were quite busy through November. I looked at it, and we actually had 22 of the 68 files were cleared with either charges laid or charges recommended. And so that was 32%, which is quite high. I looked at RSC 10 as a whole, which is who we kind of report to and are part of. And the RSC 10 as a whole was only 7%. We were 32, so significant increase there for us here on Grammont Inn when we're looking at files with charges. Breaking that down, the 68 files there, we had two assault investigations, two harassment, two operating threats, four mischief, two theft complaints. We had two careless use of firearm files, and one where we're recommending charges involving a poaching incident from kind of the hunting season there. We had two quarter act investigations, three charges for driving while suspended. We had one ATV seize for a flight from police, and some tickets were issued in that case. We also issued one other warning for driving on the road for another ATV. Still getting the excuse from a lot of people about, oh, they're allowed to go from trail to trail. And I try to remind people that that is not the case still, that driving them on the highway anywhere is still against law under our Grammont Inn. Now, I remind them again, we are quite lenient when it comes to this. If we do know they're just getting to the trail or something like that, or just coming home from the trail, as long as they're driving safely, they've got a helmet on, stuff like that, they stop and talk to us, we're usually pretty good about it. It's more of the ones who are driving them like a car that we have some issues with. And so I talk to some people about that. We did have four impaired driving charges. One resulted from a collision, and one was impaired by drug that we were looking at. And we did have seven other collision investigations, and 20 other traffic complaints or traffic stops that we did in November. Just want to give a reminder for the holiday season, which is upon us now, that with work parties and get togethers with families and friends, just make sure you have, doesn't need a driver, or if you didn't plan to have some drinks and you did, just call somebody. I'm sure there's somebody out there who would be willing to give you a hand and drive you home. We want to see people get home safely, and we don't want to see anybody get hurt this holiday season for that. Just a quick update on our staffing levels. We do have Constable Mark Wright coming here from Saskatchewan, and that should be in February. We're looking at probably the second week of February, he should be here on duty still. We're looking forward to that, and he's quite excited to get here as well. So that's all I had to share with you tonight, but if there's any questions, I'll ask him.
Any questions? I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but it is a little, I'm a little concerned that 32% having charges late, but that's pretty significant and serious, given the list of things you just let off. Is there any, I don't, I don't even know how to ask this question, but is there any best practices, anything that you think you could suggest to people, or is there any reason why we're seeing this uptick? Or, I don't know, it's just, it's a pretty significant effort to have pop up.
It's a good question. I don't know that I have necessarily an answer for you. I did, we did kind of notice that at the start of lobster season with it being pushed back, that that did see an increase in police calls. There's some extra charges laid through that time there. And it wasn't what I was necessarily expecting. I kind of thought, well, all these people being brought in from the way, they've got nothing to do, they're going to be finding themselves maybe in some trouble. But it was actually more so local islanders that were the ones getting into some trouble. So that, we did see a little bit of an increase there, just with that, that delay and people being able to get out on boats and, and, and water. But aside from that, I, I don't necessarily have a reason for it. I think I'll probably just kind of look at that percentage as we move forward over the next couple of months and see if maybe we are hired in general. I know that here on Grammont Inn, we do have more time to investigate our files, and we do have more time to dedicate to them. And so we are going to see a higher percentage of files cleared with them being solved in one way or another, as opposed to other areas where they don't necessarily have the time to really dig into things, and it's more of just written up, and then pass it off and go on to the next file. So we definitely would see a higher percentage here, I think, just for that reason alone anyways.
And I'm guessing stability is staff has something to do with that as well, as opposed to people, people who are here over a longer period of time instead of moving in and out.
That's true.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, as you spend more time here, you're going to get to know the people, and you might be involved, and even just having relationships with, with people on the islands helps build a little bit of trust there, where people might be more forthcoming in coming in to report, or things like that as well.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
So I guess the next thing would be our 10-minute open session. Anyone who can pop, I'll bring it on to 14-1, Underneath Business, which is street names gone, so we'll round it to the right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, this is real important, but for many, many years, our local highway supervisor has provided the service of putting up the posts and the signs for private lanes. And we have the signs made here, and provide them, but they've always taken them. And that service is no longer being provided, so we just kind of need to come up with some type of a system or a solution to put these signs up. We've got a few signs over by the clerk's desk that's kind of waiting. So I was just going through the, the file offer, the, for the sit, but it doesn't really state out of the fact that there's posters, you know, advertised, or 911 numbers saw the resident, as far as posts and signs filled in the lanes, didn't really say. So I guess it's more open for suggestions or ideas on, on how to kind of solve this little bit of an issue to get these posts set.
Councilor Lee.
How are we allowed to put a post up on room 776?
And so you ask. It seems all of a sudden, no.
Yes. I think we should get maybe a, a fair answer from ETI as to where the, where we stand with installments on the road, where what we feel is right and what they feel right. But there's no conundrum or, I don't think right now, who's allowed to say that we can put up the sign and we can't.
Yeah, it's technically 66 feet on, on 776 Inglehead, and so the engage routes are property of ETI, and all the signs would be within that right of way. So yeah, I can reach out to ETI further and ask the question if we are able to, and if not, who's responsible, Jack, to be to put up those signs.
And it's just a matter of hiring a contractor or a contractor to take care of that?
Yes.
So is, like our new school signs that are going to go up, does that rule affect that as well?
There was, we had a visiting the office with some concern over the placement of the school signs. Apparently back in the day, there was not permission given according to one individual, but according to the office staff, there, there was, so.
And the regulation for the school zone is a lot smaller than what we've established with our previous signs, but I don't think we should move away from where they are now. I mean, it brings in students at dinnertime, attorneys at dinnertime, and all kinds of dinnertime, and everything in between, and there's a lot of stuff there. I don't think it should be any closer to the school than what it is.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the school signs were put a little bit farther outside of the school zone because we needed the power, and those were kind of the closest poles to where, where we get access to the power. So.
They're also probably a lot more visible there than they might be closer to the school and higher traffic areas. Councilor Boyd's ready.
Yeah, no, in St. George, they seem to be quite, sorry, there's, well, I think they start, I think around the RCP station and just before, come down Porous Hill, and I think it goes down to the entrance into that subdivision that's just up from Irving. So there must be some sort of, you can have this much, or this much, or this much somewhere. I think it's just worth a call and get confirmation.
Whatever the standard is, we have to adopt that.
Yeah.
We can't manufacture our own.
That's it.
The standard is 200 meters in either direction, isn't it?
Of the school boundaries.
That's my understanding. It's that it used to be, well, it was 500 feet, but then it's now 200 meters. So I understand we're going to see clarity on policy around the place in the street signs, and that we can discuss further, maybe at the January meeting if required. Is that there?
Yep.
Okay. 14-2 insurance. Do you have a ring?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at, our renewal was up, so the staff and myself have been going through, answering a lot of questions and emails coming back from the broker, as well as from the insurance provider. But one thing that they did point out this year that has always been included in our policy, that is no longer included, we have to either, we have to decide whether we know this coverage, is abuse liability insurance. So if we decide to go with abuse liability insurance, we need to come up with a abuse and harassment policy. They are asking for within 60 days of renewal that we provide this policy. So I guess at this point, it's whether or not we want to include this in the coverage for this year, and if we do, we'll have to make a policy and get that approved. So basically, the abuse policy isn't if, say, for example, if the treasurer goes ballistic and used the C I L.
With that one.
Yeah.
But it also covers if any staff, the staff also includes the fire department and the counselors, like if you're out in public, it protects against physical, verbal, sexual, all the different harassments in cases like this, for example, like if our programmers are doing programs amongst the community, fire staff, everybody, everybody. So one thing that we will have to provide, if we do decide to go that way, is we'll need to do the criminal records, as well as all the sector checks.
Is that expensive coverage?
It was not expensive, no. No, in talking with Erin, she highly recommends it, just in today's society. So, so as of right now, I actually told her to include it, and we decided either way that I would let her know, but, so it's just a matter of, it's a renewal that's actually going to generate one. So you have time to take it off if you wish, but if not, we'll have finished the application, but we'll also have to find, decree that harassment and abuse policy.
Questions or comments?
It's probably worth pursuing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we hear a motion to proceed with that, or just hold it down with the policy at the end of the day?
I would go with the motion to include that on the 2023 policy, event director's staff to, to create a new policy.
I think we, track this to, ooh, ooh, C I L and biolite community, is that kind of biolite's policy in our policy? Yeah, someone to get an abuse and harassment policy in place for insurance company.
You heard the motion from Councilor Green. We have seconded.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Green. More questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. 14-3 is PAC members, term renewal, Councilor Green.
Okay, just a reminder for some of you, and I guess I can't say to people on TV that aren't really here. We have six members on our PAC, and each year, two of them come up for renewal. This year, the two up for renewal are, I don't have my glasses on, Tam Greenlee and Kirk Chaney. Tam Greenlee has volunteered to stay on the board, and advise your committee. Kirk Chaney has opted to not reoffer his services. He'll be done, his duties on December 31st of this year. We should thank Kirk for his service to the community in this capacity. But that does mean we will have head agency, and we should be trying to recruit interested parties to apply for that. But in that regard, I move that we appoint Tam Greenlee to a new three-year term on the PAC commits in January 1st of 2023, and expiring on December 31st, 2025.
You heard the motion from Councilor Green. Do we have a seconded?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Cole. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. I suggest, last time, I think we advertised on our Facebook page for the vacancy, and maybe that would be a good first step, and if anybody knows of anybody who is interested, maybe they could reach out to the office. 14-4, snow removal, Scotiabank Building, year end.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've, we kind of forgot about the Scotiabank Building when we done the tenders, but unfortunately we only had one company put in for the snow removal for all municipal buildings and Boise Airport. So I did reach out to that same contractor to see if it was possible to add the Scotiabank building to the policy, kind of as, on an as-screw-or-as-needed basis. So they did agree, it was very minimal, it was like $115 plus $15 for, for sanding, per storm, per request. We didn't have much we had to do it, but like, Councilor Green, I'll undo it for the day, that insurance, we do need to have it somewhat accessible for emergency services, so we'll have to keep the top level of compliance. You know, do the entire parking lot, but just have to make it accessible. So if everyone's okay with that, we will appoint that to some contractor, the student rest in this building, so here it's work.
Questions or comments? There's nothing, so, there's no decision, right? All right, 14-5 is the year-end mailout, and that's me, which I bet that this one's probably going to be, have a first of the year mailout. We did this last year, and I think it was well received within the community, sort of a synopsis of what has happened over the past year. I think sometimes it's really easy to look at some of the negative things that have happened, but I think if you look around the table and start going committee by committee, there's been a lot of positive things that have happened as well. So if there is support, I'd like to try to do one of those again, probably early January at this point, given where we are on the calendar. I'd suggest that if you want to include anything specifically from your committees, that you have it in between sometime between Christmas and New Year's, otherwise, I may take liberty of doing it myself. So if there's general support for that, I'm just looking for input as to how people feel about it. Yep. We'll proceed with that then, hopefully sometime in January, and get better mail. 14-6 is the 2023 budget, which I didn't bring with me, so I'm hoping someone else has it with them.
I agree.
All right. We have had a number of meetings on the sales of the last two months. I think we've gone through the full budget three times, line on line, and I think we're at a place where we're comfortable, hopefully, with what the budget says. So I'm hoping I was to have a motion there for someone that is going to be able to help me mow my way through the files. I do. Is there, if there's to be no more discussion on it, I do have the numbers. Chris, do you have your budget right there that I gave you today?
Yes.
Okay, we just have to pick one number because we're supposed to ram the budget, and I can't do it every year, so I'll do that right in a second. So we'll, for a minute. So while they're doing that, but just, is there any questions or comments on the budget, or are we comfortable with where we ended up last week? I think our last meeting was one of those, for both last time. While they're changing the budget, we could talk about the end-of-year donations, because there is some money left in the surcharge, and that will impact what we do with budgets. We could do that, just to continue along.
That must be screened.
There were, there was, the Grammont Inn Museum, the Animal Welfare League, the tourism, and the trail. Had all requested money for either the end of this fiscal or the beginning of next year as a donation. So do we want to make a donation of this year's budget? Because we do, we need to do that, or see if someone can, to see if someone wants to make a motion either individually on any of these, or collectively as a group.
Well, if we are all still in favor of what we discussed at the previous meeting, from this year's budget, I believe, yep?
Yes.
I think we had said $20,000, a $5,000 donation each for people that applied, so I would make a motion to donate $5,000 each to the four associations that applied for grants.
You heard the motion from Councilor Boyd. Do we have a seconded? Seconded by Councilor Brown. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Can I say, we're taking very brief time, although I'll be 40, but.
Okay, I'd like to move, therefore, if you resolve that the sum of $3,544,935.0 be the total operating budget of the municipality, with the sum of $3,071,582.84 be the warrant of the municipality for the ensuing year, and that the tax rates for the municipality be $1.228, excuse me, $1.2283 for Grammont Inn Island, and .7500 for the Oder Islands. The council orders and directs the Levian by the Ministry of the Government and Local Government a set amount of real property liable to taxation under the Assessment Act in the municipality of Grammont Inn.
You heard the motion by Councilor Green. We have a seconded.
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Cole. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. And because I know someone will ask, we're down about two cents, I think, from last year, somewhere in that range. So that leaves us with year-end transfers, which I believe the treasurer has numbers for us that we could talk about, or are they included here in the?
Nope, we talked about it, that was at our last budget meeting, and you guys decided on transferring $40,000 into our operating reserve fund, and $40,000 into our capital reserve fund. So I just need someone to make two motions. One to transfer $40,000 of our general operating fund into our general operating reserve fund. What will be your first motion?
You heard the motion by Councilor Green. We have a seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Simmons. Question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry.
Your second motion that I made is from the general operating fund into the capital reserve fund for forty thousand dollars. I will make that motion.
You heard the motion from Council Tole, we have a second? Seconded by Council Boyd, question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. And just for anyone who may, we need to be as far through the meeting and watching, those who get access to that money next year should move it for either operating or capital expenses, so. All right, so the next item is the committee reports, which is solid waste, which we can move to closed session. So then we move on to bylaws, which is the third reading of our world plan bylaw.
This is entitled.
Title open, okay.
Bylaw number fifty-six dash twenty-two, the bylaw to amend by law thirty-nine dash zero four, the world plan bylaw. Now there are some numbers that you started to write with that.
Yeah, Jennifer sent along the last of the request from the residents about changing from mixed use to rural. So she agreed that it made more sense to move properties that fronted on Smith Lane and Ohio Pond, move from mixed use to rural. So she just listed the property, get the numbers, I'm just. Just have your court in minutes.
That's moving from mixed use to rural.
Mixed use to rural. Just because of location. So that's, yeah, properties fronting on Ohio Pond Road and ones fronting on Smith Lane. Did you fronting?
I was trying.
Yeah. Subuse? Sorry.
I love the sobriety in my channel. Um, the outtakes from the meeting are going to be something. It's crazy. So it really.
It's two thousand. I'll get it here on the computer, it catch the green one. I'll try that. Can read it.
Okay, so the P I D numbers that are moving from mixed use to rural are P I D number one-five-zero-zero-five-four-zero-six, one-two-eight-eight-four-six-three, one-two-nine-one-six-three-two, one, uh, one-two-eight-eight-one-oh-nine, one-five-two-zero-four-six-nine-six, one-two-nine-oh-five-oh-one, Uh, one-two-eight-eight-two-four-zero, one-five-zero-zero-five-zero-seven-seven, one-five-zero-five-four-one-six, uh, one-five-two-zero-four-six-nine-six, one-two-nine-oh-five-four-one, one-two-eight-eight-four-one-four, You want the properties that front on the Ohio Pond Road, right?
That is, that's fine.
Okay, that was in point. So properties that front on the Ohio Pond Road, P I D numbers one-five-two-zero-two-eight-two-three, one-two-eight-seven-nine-five-two.
Can you second this for bylaws, please?
Uh.
Yep.
That's around forty properties at least must be there. Have they been, I mean, was there a process to say?
Yeah, they were all reviewed by, by Dylan's plan planners.
And so they meet the intent of the plan, it was just an oversee.
They did, that's why she said that they made sense to move those.
Okay, I was expecting four or five.
And this doesn't finalize, you can still apply to P A C in order to have it, have your property reviewed if necessary.
So you don't have to do a resum?
Yeah, once, once the world plan is in, you have to do a full resum.
Like a super cool process, yeah.
I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor Simmons, question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. We made the December thirty-first deadline for our world plan, yay! So we have a few invoices to pay. From the general operating fund, Safety Source Fire Inc. for the fire department, ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents. Iceoft Technologies for the buoyant, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Alpha Securities for the camera system, one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. L's Funeral Home for the Northhead Cemetery, one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. St. Paul's A C W for the fire department annual supper, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Gila Law Fire Truck for the oh-seven truck, two thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Fishing Gear Coalition of Atlantic Canada for the transfer station, Roper Muggles, seven thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and one cent. Again, for the Fishing Gear Coalition for the Roper Muggles, three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Home Hardware November Statement, ironically for Christmas lights, two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. We give it confirmed legal matters, four thousand, four hundred and two dollars and forty-five cents. J I L Engineering for Playground Equipment, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-three cents. Charlotte County Refrigeration for Heat Pumps, four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Urquhart Quality Homes for the Pavilion, twenty-three thousand, eleven dollars and fifty cents. Trace Planning and Design for the Performance Stage, four thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Trace Planning and Design for the Community Center, three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Trace Planning for the Community Center, six thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And Trace Planning and Design for the Swimming Pool, two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. If I transcribed any of those numbers, please thank you for not translating them out today. We have a motion to accrue those, payment of those invoices from the general operating fund.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Council Green, we have a second?
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Simmons, question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. I will say that several of those are money in, money out that we're actually funding for projects for, so it's not straight out of budget. Seventeen, seventeen point two from the General Capital Fund, we have the Northern Construction of Progress payment of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. For Brunswick Engineering for the airport rehab, eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Coastal Enterprises of Progress claim of seventy-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. And Coastal Enterprises Progress Code Number Two for one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents. Have a motion to pay those.
I would move to pay those four invoices.
There is a motion from Council Green, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Council Tole, question?
These are airport-related, the top two are airport and the bottom two are the community center side of the road.
Any other question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carry. Eighteen one, transfer funds from our one credit to our general capital fund to cover the building to the airport project, would it be for a motion? Seconded by Council Boyd, do we have a second? Seconded by Council Green, what question?
Um, it's to cover these two bills here, um, at the top, so we just keep that on there, the policy to cover the airport bill, so the two top ones, it's what's being traced.
Any other question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carry. Eighteen two, to transfer twenty-nine thousand from the general operating fund to the capital reserve fund.
It could be fire truck, probably a budget.
Well, I'm with that motion.
There's a motion from Deputy Mayor Simmons, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Tole, question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Transfer ten thousand dollars from the general operating fund to the capital reserve fund, has that most people want to make?
This is fair, most people make, this is a budget.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Heard the motion from Council Tole, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Green, what question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Eighteen four is to transfer sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars from our gas tax fund to our general capital fund. Oh, and ninety-five cents, I'm not sure what I said, but sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll make that motion.
You heard the motion for Council Green, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. I'm going to see if she did make any information.
For the top cost of bill, her taxes.
And then the last one would be the second cost of bill, I'm assuming, to transfer one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and nine cents from the gas tax fund to the general capital fund. I'll make that motion. There's a motion from Council Tole, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Green, question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Item number nineteen on the agenda is closed session, we have five items, we have personnel for the building inspector, dog constable staff, we have a property update and solid waste financial.
Make a motion to move it to closed session.
There's a question from Deputy Mayor Simmons, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Tole, all those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. I recall this council meeting back to order for closed session, we just got five things while we were in there. The first was personnel, building inspector. And I believe we were going to make a motion to table this to the January ninth meeting.
Make a motion to table this to the January ninth meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll make that one.
I thought we were looking for the final proposal at the January ninth meeting to be able to accept it, because there's still discussion on this contract.
Yeah, we just can proceed with discussions until that time.
Okay, well then if you'd like to make the better motion, we go ahead.
I will, if we proceed, direct the C A O to proceed with discussion of the E R C regarding building inspection services.
There is a motion from Council Green, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Simmons, question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. And we would like to extend a thank you to Nancy Young, who's been our building inspector for the past several years, I'm not sure her name is, but we appreciate his service to the island. Nineteen two is personnel, the dog constable.
I would move that we increase dog constables wages to be agreed upon on that.
There is a motion by Council Boyd, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council Turner, question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carry. Nineteen three is personnel staff.
Last minute. The first one deal, the Christmas bonus issue, as in previous years, we will have the three levels of amounts here, there's one hundred dollar level, two hundred dollar level, and five hundred dollar level. And I move that we direct the payment of these monies to the people listening.
You heard the motion by Council Green, do we have a second?
I will.
I'll interrupt, I spoke this. Council Tole seconded, all those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Council Green.
And due to the rising cost of living and the quality and quantity of work and dedication to their jobs, it is a recommendation of the Personnel Committee to award a raise five percent to all employees commenced in January, twenty twenty-three.
There's a motion by Council Green, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Green, what question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Nineteen four was a property update. I believe.
Was that?
We were going to make a motion to.
I didn't know what I was talking about Christmas.
We're going to decline the offer and the C A O is going to continue discussion, because I recall is where we ended on that one.
Definitely is. I will make that motion.
You heard the motion by Council Tole, we have a second? Seconded by Council Ray, any question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Nineteen five was the solid waste report, that was the financial issue as the transfer station. And I believe we were going to table that till the January ninth meeting for more information. Would you like to move that?
I will move that we do that.
There's a motion from Council Tole, we have a second?
Last one.
Seconded by Council Ray, any question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Contrary minded? Motion carry. Our next regular council meeting will be January ninth, twenty twenty-three here at Community Center. I'd like to thank everybody for hanging in there tonight, that was a long one, and Merry Christmas. And happy holidays.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There's a question from Deputy Mayor Simmons, good night.